One way or another, and certainly many of us have family members who have mental illness, and it's an incredibly important factor in society. I might mention, and I see John on the video here, or on Zoom rather, that in the community health survey that was done a couple of years ago, mental health presented itself as the number one problem, the number one health problem. And maybe later on, John can speak to that a little bit. So it's prevalent all over, and certainly in Port Townsend and Jefferson County. As you're aware, we sent out some questions and then invited all of the candidates to give very brief opening statements. And so let's turn to those now, if we may, and I'll just be arbitrary about how I do this. Heidi, may we begin with you, please, for a minute or two of opening statement?
Sure. Thanks, Patrick. The first thing I want to do is thank the National Alliance on Mental Illness and the Recovery Cafe for all of your work in our community. I usually start these out thanking you for hosting these forums, but I don't want to do that. I want to thank you for what you do every day in our community. I'm just going to share three reasons that I hope that you will check my name on the ballot, whether you're in District Two and your ballot's sitting on your desk at home, or you're going to be voting in November. The first is that I know the community. I've lived here in the Hartford-Hadlock since 1981. I went to school here. I've owned small businesses in the community, and I've run large nonprofits. I feel I have the most relevant leadership experience for this role because I've taken on positions of increasing responsibility in our community. And I finally have made it a point to study what the job actually is through interviewing county leaders, listening to the B O C C meetings weekly, and having dozens of, dozens, probably hundreds at this point, of conversations in our community about what people want from our county leaders. It's clear to me now that this race isn't about me, it's about you. I've been endorsed by hundreds of my neighbors, and these supporters say they're supporting me because I know them and what they care about. I understand what the job of Commissioner is, and most importantly, because they trust me. Thank you for having us here today.
Thank you, Heidi, and let's go next to Lorna, if we may, please.
Good morning. I also want to join Heidi in thanking the National Alliance of Mental Illness and the Recovery Cafe for the great work you're doing. We're all watching with anticipation as the construction on the cafe goes forward. And it, you know, it's pretty amazing to watch that happen. So we're looking forward to the day that's an open facility. Jefferson County, Washington State, and our country are in the middle of a COVID crisis. It's created spin-off repercussions throughout our community. We need experienced leadership now more than ever to navigate through these tough times that test our safety net for our communities most vulnerable, put our elder population at risk of serious illness, and challenge our ability to rapidly match resources with needs. I have 25 years of working inside county government and collaborating with a myriad of other government agencies, local, state, and federal, as well as nonprofits. I've always been a community advocate, fighting to make our community a better, more just place to live. As a planning commissioner for the past seven and a half years, I have stood up for policies for more affordable housing and a safer environment for everyone. We need to do a better job for our most vulnerable county residents. When elected Jefferson County Commissioner, I will use my experience and my knowledge to serve everyone in our community. No one should be left to fall between the cracks. And I also want to mention that among my many, many endorsements, I was recently endorsed by Fuse Washington, and I'm very proud to have that endorsement. Was the only candidate in the county races that they endorsed. And as you well know, many social service organizations are represented under that umbrella of Fuse, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, Lorna, and Amanda, please.
Hello, thank you for having me today. I am so excited at the work that's happening with Dove House and the Recovery Cafe. I know how necessary it is for all folks in recovery and in different stages of need to just have a safe place in our community that they can identify as theirs. I want to thank the National Alliance of Mental Illness for having us here this morning to speak with you. For those of you who I have not had the pleasure of meeting yet, my name is Amanda Finaro. My pronouns are her and she, and I appreciate being here, having a chance to introduce myself today. I want to earn your vote to be the next District Two County Commissioner. I have lived and worked in Jefferson County for the better part of 30 years, and I know from personal experience what it takes to earn a living here, let alone to raise a family on those same working-class wages. It doesn't matter if you're a young person who's just starting out, a single parent trying to raise child, someone who's nearing retirement trying to figure out what the next phase of life looks like, or one of our many beloved elders in our community. Just, there are a few things that are more destabilizing for someone than not having a safe, secure place to call home. That's why, once elected, my top priority is going to be to continue to work towards increasing our inventory of affordable and accessible housing for every resident and every member of our community. I think many of us can agree that the COVID pandemic is going to have long-lasting impacts on all of us. But I know that I'm the right candidate in this moment to bridge community divides. It doesn't matter which side of the divide you stand on, whether it is one of economic concern, one of political difference, one of social justice. I'm here to represent our county as a whole. I'm here to represent you, and I'm here to bridge those divides so that we can work together towards a sustainable and resilient Jefferson County into the future. I appreciate your vote on August 4th, and I appreciate you for having us today. Thank you.
I'm on mute here, hang on, okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. I can't hear myself. I have my earphones on. Belle, let's turn to you for our first question, and I believe that all, we sent these around to all of the candidates. Belle? Are you there, Belle?
Patrick, do I get to do an opening statement, too?
Oh, I apologize, Commissioner. Of course you do, the incumbent. Yes, yeah, please go right ahead.
Thank you, Patrick and Belle. Nice to see you. What a great turnout. Thanks, everyone, for being here to talk about these really important issues. I want to acknowledge what difficult times we're in right now, and those of you working with people who struggle with mental illness probably know this better than anyone, and I think we probably all share a commitment to being politically engaged right now. So thank you. There's probably never been a more important time to be engaged. And like the other candidates have said, thank you so much for the good work that NAMI and the Recovery Cafe and so many organizations represented here today do every day. You know, our county does not have a human services department. Many small counties don't, and so we really rely on partnerships with groups like yours to do the important work. And I also want to acknowledge that I feel extremely fortunate, both because I have a job and I'm lucky to have an income and some stability right now, thanks to taxpayer dollars, but also that I'm unopposed in this election. Both of these things motivate me to work harder than ever to get the county through this crisis and many of the intractable problems that we have. So I don't have to campaign a lot, and it frees me up to talk about some of the, you know, issues at hand today. That said, I don't take your vote for granted for a minute, and sure, appreciate it on the primary and general election ballot. So I love this job. It's been four years of learning an enormous amount, but also being frustrated because we know that government can be very slow. And we also know that the future here feels a little bit tenuous. I was here through the recession in 2008 and saw businesses close, families leave, the schools suffer. And so embracing again now for many of the impacts of the crisis we're in. I'll just say briefly my priorities. Right now, we need to keep our communities healthy. We have to take care of our most vulnerable, which we'll talk about more today. We have to support our local businesses. We have to figure out a way to house everyone, and we need to build infrastructure such as broadband to support a new economy. These are not easy goals. These are the same things I said four years ago. It's probably the same thing Commissioner Sullivan said 16 years ago when he was setting out on this. But I hope I've earned your trust and your vote to do this work with you over the next four years, and I really look forward to digging into these issues further today. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. My apologies. I haven't seen any signs anywhere, and so somehow I lost you in the mix there. Commissioner Sullivan, are you on the phone there? I don't hear Commissioner right now, but let's thank him for his multiple years of service to the county. Is it 16 that Commissioner Sullivan has been going to the courthouse every day?
Yeah, he's finishing his fourth term.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Sullivan. And now let's turn to those opening statements, which I think were sent to you beforehand. And Belle, I believe you have the first question.
I think if David Sullivan has something to say, he would have to unmute himself, and I don't know. He's on my phone, so I don't know how that works, but, ah, there he is.
Does this work?
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this is a big job. I really appreciate the candidates that have stepped up to do it, and each one has talked with me extensively about the job, and I really believe each one of these people can do the job. So I feel very fortunate to be leading the county in good hands. When I look at the seated commissioners, when I look at all the other elected officials and department heads, I see us in a very good spot to deal with some very difficult issues. As Kate mentioned, I've been working on for 16 years, and a lot of it right now, I mean, I'm totally pandemic-focused with what we do, and it's really changed things a lot. And it's a real challenging, dynamic time for the county. So I don't want to take up any more time. Let's hear from the candidates.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your public service. It's not a small thing to stand for public office these days and to serve for nearly two decades. I might note, as we turn to Belle for the first question to post to our candidates, that we now have 30, I need my glasses to read that number, so.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five people, okay. I think we're ready for that first question, Belle.
Okay, we're going to start with just a general question, but we are, for the other questions, going to be really focused. And I know some of you may have touched on this already in your opening statements, and we're going to try to keep the answers to about a minute till we get to the housing questions, and that probably will take more than a minute for you to answer them. So the first question is, if you are elected, what will be your focus in terms of both economic and social issues in this county? So can we start, we're going to mix it up each time and not start with the same person each time. So can we start with Lorna Smith? And you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go. So should I read the question, Belle, or do you want to read the question?
No, I just read the question. This is a short one. If you're elected, what will be your focus in terms of both economic and social issues in this county?
So the most important thing, as soon as I take office, assuming I get there, is going to be continuing to address the COVID impacts to both our economy and to our social safety nets. And following that, it's going to be helping recovery for the local businesses, getting them access to the help they need, helping them make applications for loans and grants. We're also going to need to take stock of our existing housing stock and ways we can increase that, both in terms of affordable housing, because I'm afraid we're going to see more people in need of assistance, and then also housing shelter for the homeless. So we really need to make sure that we step forward aggressively to get the resource help that we need into this county. We're going to need to press for extension of unemployment for people in the county that have been losing their jobs, or help for the businesses that have had to close their doors either temporarily or longer than temporarily. And then we need to make sure that we do have our homeless population under roof in a safe place where they have access to clean water and sanitation and a place to, you know, be safe. So that's what we need to address right away on day one taking office and probably well into that first year.
Thank you, Lorna. And Amanda, the same question. If you're elected, what will be your focus in terms of both economic and social issues in this county?
Hi, Belle. Thank you for the question. Once elected, my priority is going to really be to dig into our budget with my fellow commissioners and see where the gaps are falling. As I've been listening and exploring what's happening in this moment, all indications are pointing towards a budget looking really strong right now. But I know that even within, you know, within the business that I'm currently running, you know, looking back over financials from 2008, things looked really strong, and development looked really good, and builders had lots of permits. And then by 2010, everything had gone flat. So I'm a little reluctant to make too big of assumptions based on what we're seeing currently, because I don't think that's a big enough trend. So to really dig into those financials and then start to build and explore stopgap measures to create some safety nets around those economics, the economics of the county. So if, for example, what I hope will come out of the Fed in terms of relief funds and access to grants, fingers crossed, in different places, that we're really well-leveraged and ready to apply to those funds and see how we can utilize them, whether that is through developing more, oh, the word just slipped to my mind, excuse me, more capital projects, for example, that we could use for the wastewater treatment facility that we're looking to put into Hadlock, or building housing for homeless, or bolstering our school systems. You just never know where the relief funds are going to come from and what rises to the top as those federal and state priorities. And so I think that as a Commissioner, it'll be really important to kind of be scanning the horizon, you know, to see what's going to come up that we can jump on, and also to really dig down into what's happening and the nuts and bolts. So that's the economic side. And then just quickly on the social issues. You know, I think that in this moment, so much has come up for us as a community and as a nation around social justice. And I think that it's really a valuable time to sit with our community and have really meaningful and intentional conversations about how the invisible of our population are not being seen at all levels, and what we can do collectively as leaders and as a government to help magnify and see those folks and have their voices elevated. It's very broad, I know, but that, in a broad sense, that would be my focus. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is kind of a broad question. The others are more focused. So Kate, the same question. If you're elected, what will be your focus in terms of both economic and social issues in the county?
Sure, and I will probably hear some recurring themes here. But I, and many people within the county view the Port Hadlock Sewer as the number-one infrastructure project in the near term. And, you know, I know that might feel a little abstract to folks, but until that sewer is built, we can't grow businesses, or create jobs, or build affordable housing very easily in the county. And these are critical, not just for what they provide, but because they also help to build a more sustainable tax base for the county, which means that we can provide much-needed services. I'd say housing is both an economic and social issue. We certainly need more housing so that people can be bringing in employees. We hear again and again that organizations want to hire employees, but they can't find housing here, so very interested in workforce housing. And then I take very seriously the task force on homeless and housing that suggested, came up with a recommendation that we need a tiny house village. So I think that's probably something we'll be talking about later, but that's a big priority for me. I'm also deeply committed to social justice and have started an initiative to have all county employees explore both personal and institutional racism and concepts of privilege and implicit bias. So excited to work with the county family on those issues. And then I'm learning a lot right now about trauma-informed care and how we can apply it to work on intractable issues like behavioral health and housing and the criminal justice system. And I'm really starting to understand how, through building trust and relationships, how critical that is to helping vulnerable neighbors get out of poverty and addiction and mental health crises. So those are some of my focus areas.
Thank you so much, Kate. Now, Heidi, same question. If you're elected, what will be your focus in terms of both economic and social issues in this county?
Thank you for the question. I think a lot of my answer has been given by the other candidates and our incumbent. But obviously, the writing's on the wall, and when elected, we will be focused on the COVID-19 pandemic and our response to it for the foreseeable future. I'm hopeful about a roadmap for collaborative approaches to dealing with economic and social issues in our county, based on the work that the county is doing in partnership with the other governments and through the task forces that are being staffed by citizens in our community. I'm looking forward to seeing the results of that work. But what I'm most concerned about is shelter, food, and basic support services for people. I see these as the underpinnings of all the focus areas that the county has outlined in their COVID-19 resiliency and recovery plan. And I've been talking with a lot of the leaders in our nonprofits and our county agencies, and I'm hearing a need to kind of fly up to 10,000 feet and look at the big picture and come up with a good plan for moving through these issues together, rather than just continuing shell games of funding that have happened in our community over the last decades, where, for example, I heard that childcare support was recently prioritized for essential workers, but then people, working moms who counted on support for childcare, lost their support for the childcare that they depended on. So I think we need to think about how we are mapping out our solutions and the impacts they're going to have on the other parts of our community as we develop new solutions. What I think that will require is coordination and collaboration between our county leads in these areas and also the service providers, you guys, NAMI and Dove House and Recovery Cafe and all of the other people in our community who are providing the services to the people in our community who need them. We need to work better together, and I have a proven track record of building collaborations to lead to results, tangible, on-the-ground results. And I would look forward, I'm being focused in that way.
Thank you so much, Heidi. And now we're going to move on to more focus questions. We'll start with Brian. Can you start with question number two?
Yes, of course. And for this one, we'll just do the opposite order that we had just done. So we'll do Heidi, Kate, Amanda, and then Lorna. So the question is, through various funding sources, we were able to get a navigator from Port Townsend working with the police department. That person, Judson Haynes, has been able to make contact with dozens of people who would normally be dealing with law enforcement, but now have someone to help connect them with services like behavioral health care, housing, food transportation, and medical services. As a Commissioner, will you support funding for an additional navigator who would work with the whole of Jefferson County? So we'll start with Heidi on this one.
Thank you, making sure I'm not muted. Thank you, Brian. I had already written down, I have a whiteboard of ideas in my office, and I'd already written down navigator for the county before I got this question emailed to me. So the answer to that one is yes. And based on conversations that I've been having recently in our community, it's clear to me that this kind of approach can be super effective for dealing with mental health and domestic violence and homelessness issues before people have to call or when people call 911, to have someone there who knows how to deal with the issues that they're encountering. I can't say how valuable I see that to be. I think that it could be, I mean, all of your questions, one thing I was struck by in reading all your questions when I first received them is they all have funding attached to them. So I can see it be a balancing act, or, you know, the magic game of putting the funding together to get these things done. But it feels like this is an effective use of resources to deal with a number of issues that our sheriff's office encounters and is not necessarily the best first responder for those issues. So, yes.
Thank you, Heidi. And Kate, same question. If anyone needs me to repeat it, I'm happy to. Otherwise, I'll let you answer.
Sure, yes, absolutely. I think this is a priority for many of us within the county. And, you know, we have a sheriff right now who's also willing to look at his department and say, are we qualified? Are we trained? Do we have the right people on board to be, you know, truly meeting the needs of folks who are in crisis and calling in? So it is good timing. We've both had success with Judd's work in the city of Port Townsend, which I will say is funded by county-wide sales tax. So that, I'm glad that the county is able to support that and would really like to see it expanded to include the sheriff's department as well. You know, I think we hear again and again through the criminal justice system, really through just about every service organization we work with, that a navigator is what is needed. And again, this brings me back to that trauma-informed care, that we need to be building relationships to help people, work with them to get through these crises. So really interested in looking at things like restorative circles for people coming out of jail. You know, I think we're learning that there is a compassionate way that is really effective in moving the needle on what seem like really intractable issues. But it takes building a lot of relationships and a lot of trust, and that takes time, and it does take funding, but it's actually the only thing that works.
Thank you, Kate. And Amanda?
Thank you. I think you're going to hear a lot of the same thing, but I absolutely support Jefferson County Sheriff's Department having a navigator. I think that, like my opponents are going to tell you, and like Kate has told you, it's what works. And when people are in crisis, very often, the response needed is not one of force and being placed into a punitive situation, but one where they are heard and seen. And I think navigators are more, a navigator can be more well-trained and skilled to deal with some of those issues. So absolutely, I would support it.
Thanks, Amanda. And Lorna?
You have to unmute yourself, Lorna.
Yep, I did. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Yes, certainly, there is a need for a county-wide program like the Port Townsend Navigator, and I fully support finding the resource to expand those programs. As I understand it, the startup funding for that position came through grants, and I believe that we should take full advantage of all such funding opportunities. I've successfully found grant sources and written successful grant applications for many public projects, and this isn't any different. And I'd be glad to work with our county heads and staff to just, you know, turn over every stone to find these resources. What we need is a better way that the sheriff and the local services can connect when there may be a need for a response to people in crisis. And Judson Hayes, the city's navigator, said that "helping to improve inter-agency communication between law enforcement between law enforcement and the service providers, courts, attorneys, and others is one of the most important aspects of his job. So I think that coordination piece, getting the right people to respond in an emergency is the important end we need to get to. Does the county have a separate navigator from the city's navigator? Do we share those services? You know, on first look, I would think that might make some sense, but I am fully supportive of that program and for funding, but finding the funding for that kind of program. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. And thank you all for answering that question. I'll move it back to Patrick for our third question.
Great. Thank you, Brian. And let's seek responses in this order. We'll begin with Kate, and Lorna will be second, then Amanda, you'll be third, and Heidi, you'll be fourth in response to this question. I'll just read it verbatim here, it's an important question. Many people who find themselves in a crisis wind up in the emergency room or jail. Will you support the development of a crisis stabilization facility for the county? Help reduce the number of persons in the jails and clinically work to stabilize persons in crisis? So again, Commissioner, we'll turn to you.
Great, thanks for the question. So, you know, I think that there is a need for a number of different facilities here. And so I'll talk a little bit about how I see that happening. So our hospital was funded to put in a certain number of mental health beds, and that's going to be important, so that instead of the emergency room, there's actually a dedicated space and skilled nursing care to be able to help folks there. But then where do they go afterwards? We desperately need transitional housing facility, and we're, it sounds like we're going to be losing one that we have in Uptown right now, so that's concerning. We know that we need a permanent place that can provide wraparound services to our vulnerable populations, including housing. And, you know, we have invested a lot of money in immediate services and immediate care, but I think we really have to start talking about investing capital dollars in something like a tiny home village. It might be a different model, but I'm really, really committed to working with community groups, with our housing providers, with the homeless, on figuring out what a permanent location with wraparound services to help folks get more, into a more stable position to be able to move into housing. I think that, I wouldn't necessarily call that a crisis stabilization facility, but I think all of these, all of these pieces work together to create the kind of safety net that we need.
Thank you, Commissioner. And the same question to you, Lorna, please.
Again, I certainly would support county, city, local mental health services, like Peninsula Mental Health, working to identify the best solution to this problem, which is real. So whether that be a separate new facility or reuse of existing space at Jefferson Healthcare or elsewhere, we need to have that. And I also agree with Commissioner Dean that we need beyond that immediate response in an emergency, we need transitional housing and transitional services just as much. Sheriff Joe Knoll told me that he's very supportive of a different solution to incarcerating people with mental health issues. He fully recognizes those people don't belong in jail, that isn't helpful to anybody. I myself had a family member in Port Orchard who was in crisis, ended up getting arrested, spending a night in jail in a normal cell. And this, so this was in Kitzau. He wasn't given access to any mental health services, and he's very subject to panic attacks. He was in a full-blown psychotic panic attack and kept banging against the cell walls until he broke his hand. That is not the right response. We need to have the right people there compassionately and with training responding to those kind of emergencies and moving those, you know, people who might be full-on in crisis into the right kind of facility where they get compassionate treatment, beneficial treatment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. And Amanda, we'll turn to you.
Thank you. Yes, I would support the development of a crisis stabilization facility. And then there's the question of how? Because as has been stated, you know, as we're entering an economic downturn of unknown size and scope, capital dollars are going to be challenging to come by, and the community is already facing a housing crisis, as we've stated, trying to figure out how to move a sewer project forward so that we can provide housing. I think that, in terms of my support, what that might look like is really helping advocate both at the state level and at the federal level as a commissioner, to put pressure back on our federal and state governments to support mental health across our nation. Closing mental health facilities and taking funding out of mental health has created a bigger crisis in America than, than I think the people whose dollars were attached to it could have, I don't think they were thinking. I think that there was wrong motivation in defunding mental health facilities and spaces for people who are in crisis to have longer-term care. So from that perspective, I think initially that would be how I would like to support it. And then certainly, if organizations like NAMI and Recovery Cafe or Dove House or Jefferson County Mental Health came together and found a pathway to, you know, build a capital project, I would love to see what the county could do to support that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. And finally, with respect to question three, we'll turn to you, Heidi.
Thank you, Patrick. Well, sometimes I just feel like saying ditto, but I'm not just going to say ditto. Of course, I would support more solutions to effectively address mental health and chemical dependency issues in Jefferson County. That's just a given. A crisis stabilization center is one solution and would be an important tool in our toolbox in addressing these issues in our county, and we've been pursuing one. We've gotten, we got a $200,000, the county community health improvement program got a $200,000 grant to have some research done into looking into a crisis stabilization center, and my understanding is they just submitted another grant to do the next round of feasibility work around getting a crisis stabilization center here. But from the conversations I've been having, it's just one solution, and it seems like we have to make sure that we're putting the right solutions in place, in the right progression. And one other solution that I've heard about that I've been really interested in is the idea of coordinated entry, to provide support for people to know where they need to go and where the services in the community are that they can get what they need. I feel like we have a lot of wonderful service providers in our community, maybe up to a dozen, but can you imagine being the person looking for that support? How do you know where to start? And I feel like if I put myself in their shoes, I think what I would want first is the outreach hand saying, here's where you need to go next. And so I really like the idea of coordinated entry or some kind of support network for people who have needs and don't know where to get their needs met. I think that this is just the beginning of this conversation, and there's real work being done right now about things like a crisis stabilization facility, but I'm not sure that it's the right first step.
Thank you, Heidi. And then we'll turn back to Val for our next question.
Thank you. This next question has to do with, for the most part, law enforcement. The question is, the nation is currently experiencing protests and demands for social justice, and much of the attention is focused on law enforcement. Will you support the increase of CIT training and de-escalation training for law enforcement? And I'm going to add, for other agencies who interact with the public as well in this county. And will you continue to support the Behavioral Health Court program in this county? So can we start with Lorna?
I have to remember to unmute every time. Yes, when elected, I plan to work with all the county departments and the electeds to review the policies across the board related to both how we treat employees internally and how we interact with the public to ensure that we are living up to those very highest standards of equity and nondiscrimination for all classes of people. Certainly, an area needing that intense focus is how law enforcement responds to people in crisis, mental, emotional, physical crisis. And that needs to start right at the 911 desk, so that the person taking that calls knows who to send in response. So yes, I do support CIT training for everyone who may be called upon to respond to mental health or behavioral health situations. And I understand with, from discussions with Sheriff Joe Knoll, that there may be a backlog in the availability of this training. So as an immediate, as an immediate intermediary step, I would like to see county personnel that have already been trained CIT to cross-train their other employees, because I think that might be the quickest way to ensure that it all happens, it needs to happen now. Everyone needs to get trained, be on the same page. So yes, I'm fully in support of that, and also in, I fully support the Behavioral Health Court program. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm hoping I don't have to read the question again, because I know you all have it. So Amanda, can you handle that question next?
Certainly can, thank you, Val. Yes, I'm absolutely in support of increased crisis intervention training and de-escalation training for our local law enforcement, as well as key county personnel and folks who interface with the public. I think that, much like, you know, sexual harassment training is a requirement for employees and, you know, good customer service, that some basic skills in de-escalation and crisis intervention are essential when you're interfacing with people in need. And so I would like to see that continue. In my conversations with Sheriff Joe, I know that he would like to see more training as well, and our sheriff's department has done a fair amount of training, but I think that that could be expanded. And then in terms of the Behavioral Health Court program, both the Behavioral Health Court and the Drug Court programs have done so much for people in this community, and I very much support them. So often, folks who, folks who are experiencing trauma end up in a situation that they wouldn't otherwise find themselves in with proper care and attention. And I think it's really necessary that there be a safe space for individuals to not be shoved into a judicial justice system that's going to further cause them harm and trauma and when just creating some intervention for them can really be life-changing. So thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. And same question for Kate?
Sure, yeah. So I will, maybe I'll just add a little detail, might be of interest. So it's interesting, the commissioners are responsible for creating the budget for the county, which is a policy priority document, but having an independently elected sheriff means that the sheriff gets to decide on quite a bit of policy for his department. And so there is a somewhat limited purview in how much the commissioners can be involved in that. Luckily, we have a sheriff who is very interested right now in expanding de-escalation and implicit bias training, and, you know, the commissioners need to do everything we can to support him in this, just like we have supported substance use disorder treatment, increased medical and mental health care in the jails, as well as our therapeutic and diversion courts, your mental health, drug court, and family court, because they are effective and they keep people out of jail long-term. So, you know, all over the country, people are having this conversation, and I think we have an opportunity to do it well here. And we actually do pretty well in terms of supporting our folks who get into jails, but we need to be doing the work upfront to be avoiding getting people in the criminal justice system in the first place.
Thank you, Kate. And finally, the same question goes to Heidi.
Well, I don't know what I can say that hasn't already been said, but I would support continued or more crisis intervention training and de-escalation training for law enforcement in Jefferson County. And if there's a backlog, maybe a backlog of getting to the trainers, maybe we need to look for trainers outside our region or be creative about where we can get that training for our responders here. I think that this all comes back to community, and I strongly believe that we have the will and the resources in our community to come out of this better through talking with each other and collaborating and working together. I really feel like already I've seen in the last six weeks, a marked improvement in the tone of the dialogue in our community around these issues and the willingness of people to work together. And I would love to be more a part of that. I'm kind of hating the COVID times and all these Zoom calls, because we can't have real conversations with each other and see each other and touch each other and shake hands, but I think I see a lot of community collaboration going on, and I commend that. I think that these human approaches to how we deal with crisis are absolutely what we need to focus on. And I was heartened to see that Commissioner Dean had organized a forum with our sheriff and some members of the BIPOC community tomorrow evening. It's going to be live on KPDC from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I encourage everyone to listen in, but these conversations are happening in our community, and please be part of them. I would, of course, support continuing to fund the Behavioral Court for our county. And what I appreciate about the Behavioral Court is that it holds people accountable to their own treatment goals with weekly check-ins, and it's a collaborative, community-based approach to mental health and drug addiction, and I appreciate that way of doing things and our community's progressiveness in that way. So I would continue to support that. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Heidi. And I think, Brian, or is it, yeah. Brian, you have the next question.
Okay, great, thanks so much. So I want to preface this question, I guess, by saying it gets pretty specific on a current issue affecting our community, and what I don't want to do is lose the forest for the trees. That being said, I think this is pertinent to what's happening right now. So these next two questions were submitted by, actually, one of the founders, NAMI Jefferson County, and Barbara Mori. And so we're going to ask these questions, and I'll do it in this order. I'd like Amanda to go first, and then Heidi, Lorna, then Kate. So the question is, would you be willing to reallocate the $75,000 of the 148 housing funds that is not going to be used in this fiscal year's county budget to a housing-related nonprofit to rapidly address the needs of currently unsheltered people and those affected by behavioral health issues? For some context, these funds were previously allocated by the Housing Task Force and the county for use during the fiscal year for a housing proposal that was not funded. The money could be reallocated and used for an immediate, if temporary, response to the housing crisis by creating non-congregate shelter for the homeless before winter sets in. So I know that was a mouthful. I know you guys have the questions that we submitted to you beforehand as well. Happy to repeat any of it, but Amanda, if you could go first, that'd be great.
Thank you, Brian. I feel like I am squarely in the hot seat, so this might be a very good moment to know what this is like. So let me just start by saying that I am on the Joint Oversight Board, which makes direct recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners regarding this budget in particular and the specific dollars. And so this question has been posed to the Joint Oversight Board, and our organization has not yet had an opportunity to meet nor discuss this. So I feel like I'm in a really... So I feel like I'm in a bit of a pickle because to discuss this openly and publicly without having discussed it in that forum feels a little bit like I'm putting a cart before a horse. That said, what I can do is maybe provide a little bit more background on my experience and understanding of these funds, what they were intended for, and what I see the two sides of the conversation being. The $75,000 were requested as a matching guarantee for OLECAP. They needed the funds to match a grant that they were looking to secure for a housing project on a piece of county-owned real estate off of across from the hospital off of Sheridan Street. And the $75,000 is required to be able to be matched for them to meet a threshold to receive the grant. They were not funded the grant in the last granting cycle, though my understanding from speaking with the executive director at OLECAP has been that those funds, they are going to have another opportunity to submit for that grant. I do not know, as of today's date, if that is still true. That was the last conversation we had some months ago. So the Joint Oversight Board and the task force agreed to have those funds carry over because we would not want to miss an opportunity to build a larger housing facility for multi-aged, you know, for congregate housing for families, for individuals. This facility is also supposed to house our Head Start program and be in a really great location. We haven't built any new housing in Jefferson County for low-income families and individuals in a very long time. This is, let me be clear, this is not just housing for families. So all of that being said, this is also one-time dollars. The $75,000 will not be suddenly refurbished next year. That fund will not suddenly appear again. This is an aggregate of funds that had been collecting over some time and not being spent. So once they're spent, they're gone. And we have a real issue with our unhoused population, and our current shelter is in crisis. And the other piece of information is that the folks who have been regularly sheltered at our shelter, emergency shelter, have been housed there now for two consecutive years. These are people in need of actual housing, not just transitional housing. So I'm not quite sure, to be honest, how I feel about reallocating that funding, knowing that we may have the opportunity to build permanent housing, which is obviously needed, and in light of the COVID pandemic. Tiny homes are an absolute answer, and I think that I'm not opposed to the idea. I'd like some more time to dig into what's happening with OLECAP before making that call and to be able to talk with the other members of the Joint Oversight Board.
Thank you, Amanda. Heidi?
I have the luxury of not being in a conflict of interest position on this one, but I do, I'm sensitive to the comment I made before about thinking about the repercussions of decisions on the downstream decisions or the downstream impacts in our community. And that's my first reflection on this question is I would want to know, I would want to know more. And thank you, Amanda, for letting us know that these funds cannot be reallocated. They need to be used. I think that in light of the pandemic, I think that using the funds in this way in kind of an emergency solution kind of way is just the kind of short-term pivoting that we need to be doing right now. And is the kind of responsiveness our community needs to be doing as we move through the COVID-19 pandemic and the compounding now economic downturns. We all lived through the economic downturn of 2008, and at that time, more middle-aged women were showing up as homeless in our county. They had lost their jobs and were finding it difficult to get re-employed. Those, many of those people are still finding it hard to find, hard to get jobs. So they were already struggling before COVID-19 hit, and things have only gotten worse. So having solutions that are dealing with things in kind of an emergency way is going to be something that we as a community have to be ready to do. And this seems like, on the surface, a logical reuse of resources. The issue is not abstract for me. I work kitty-corner from the Jefferson County Winter Shelter at the American Legion Post and have worked there for the last four years. Many of the folks who spend their nights in the winter shelter come across and spend their days on the Maritime Center campus and have become part of our community. These are our neighbors. These are our friends and colleagues in the community who we need to help figure out how to take care of. And I think that this kind of pivot is a good use of resources.
Thank you, Heidi. And Lorna?
Okay, thanks, Brian. I agree that we're in a time of crisis when it comes to housing the homeless in non-congregate type housing, which is what is required right now in this time of COVID-19. So those funds that we're discussing were allocated prior to the inception of the situation we're in right now without, before COVID-19 arose. So I think it is within the, it's a reasonable thing to do, to relook at reallocating those dollars. I thought I heard something different at Monday's Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I think it was Commissioner Sullivan that said it. So maybe he'd be willing to clarify that if we use those funds for something else this year, they could still be available, replacement funds could be made available next year. Maybe I misunderstood. It's not always easy listening in on those sessions on Monday morning. But at any rate, I think it does merit relooking at how we spend those funds. I think that we need a rapid deployment solution to deal with the homeless crisis. Really, we're talking about triage. I think we need to create a database of existing camping facilities, mobile home parks with capacities, like Mountain View Mobile Home Park, B&amp;R Mobile Home Park in Hadlock, Four Corners Olympic Mobile Home Park. Perhaps the county could purchase, you know, trailers, manufactured homes to have if there is capacity in any of those facilities. Might be cheaper and quicker than trying to put up a tiny home village, which I fully support down the road. But we need solutions right now. Jeff Chapman, our sister, yesterday said that contrary to all expectations, our real estate market in the county hasn't cooled off. We're heading in the opposite direction of providing affordable housing. Maybe it's time in Jefferson County that we look at something like a housing trust fund, similar to the Jefferson Land Trust Fund. And perhaps we have to look at code revisions that are going to allow more accessory dwelling units and residential zones. We need to look at all these solutions together. So short-term triage, kind of get people before winter hits with a roof over their heads and access to sanitary facilities and to clean water, place where they can lay down, sleep, knowing they're going to at least be safe through the night. That might even be parking lots where people can sleep in their cars overnight as a last resort where they know they'll be safe. I have participated in constructing, in siting and constructing affordable housing projects in Stonehommish County. I have that track record of successfully doing dozens of these kind of projects that many were mixed-use and transit-friendly. Jefferson County is a much smaller county, but we can still take that approach and shrink it down and make it work here. So I recognize that the homeless crisis in our county is only going to grow as the moratorium on evictions runs out in the state. I believe it's August 1st. Hopefully, the governor will extend that, but as we see that happen, evictions come to pass, we're going to have even more homeless people that are desperately in need in our county, and we simply need to step forward and take care of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. And Kate?
Great, thanks for the question. This is something we've been talking about a fair amount in our commission meetings on Mondays, and I have been, I've been advocating that we get as many dollars on the street as we can today. And that does not mean that the OLECAP project is not important. It is. It is the most units that have been built here for affordable housing ever, perhaps, certainly all at once, hugely important project. I support it fully. But because, in fact, what Lorna said, that we are continuing to see home sales, we are continuing to refill that pot, the Fund 148 and 149, through our recording fees. So that will be, that $75,000 will be allocated, but I don't think we need to hold on to it indefinitely until that project is funded. So an annual cycle, if it's in a year, we're going to have that money back in that pot in a year, but we need to get money on the street now. I would also say we need to be actually looking at capital dollars. We need to be building inventory with those dollars. And we had a big chunk of funds that didn't get spent for a number of years that built up, and I was really disappointed that that was not used, that capital projects were not prioritized to actually build housing. That is the only answer I see right now. And I know that it's expensive, and I know that you still need service providers. I feel like we have the expertise in this community to provide those wraparound services. We have organizations who do incredible work, and we just need to get this built. And I mean, the truth is, we need tiny houses. We need workforce housing. We need to get the Cherry Street project done. The Community Land Trust is a really important piece of this puzzle. The OLECAP does a great job with the homeless shelter at the Legion. It's one really important piece of infrastructure, but it's not serving everyone, and we just need more capacity.
Thank you, Kate. Thanks, everyone, for answering that. Chris had made a comment in the chat that the statewide eviction moratorium has been extended to October 15th. Thank you for that, Chris. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mamie. I'm not sure if Val or Patrick has taken this one.
I think it's my turn to ask the final questions, and that's a big, long paragraph. And I'll see if I can just summarize it in a sentence or two and preface it just a bit. I was on a call the other day, and I believe, and this has to do, again, with the homeless. And I might add that we know that mental illness among the homeless population is substantial, if not the majority of people who are homeless have a mental illness, often a co-incurring disorder, including substance abuse. And this has to do specifically with the use of the fairgrounds for housing and also camping for people without homes. I believe I heard the other day that the population in the Erickson Building is moving back to the Legion. I don't know if that's true. Perhaps you can clarify that. I see Brian nodding his head. And also, the campers have been moved out, if I'm current. So given those two factors, I think what the question essentially gets at here is, what would you support in terms of using the fairgrounds for a tiny home location, for example, the Erickson Building for housing, people who are homeless, and also the campgrounds, given the legal barriers that are in place now? And to, in response to that question, let's begin with Heidi, and then we'll turn to Kate, Amanda, excuse me, Lorna, Amanda. So Heidi, Kate, Lorna, and Amanda. And Heidi, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Patrick. Yeah, I think that we need to look at all county land and facilities to figure out the best solution for providing short-term housing solutions for our homeless population. And I would be supportive of using the fairgrounds. I think we all said this on the forum the other night. And I feel like I don't have all the background information, but I understand that there's a lease with an entity and that that would have to be changed. But I imagine those conversations could happen. I think I heard on the BOCC meeting yesterday that there had been some change in the allowance for people to camp out of the fairgrounds recently. Anyway, I'm supportive of finding solutions, and I'm supportive of using, as a county commissioner, using our resources to provide a safety net for our citizens. I think that's just what we need to do. At the commissioners' meeting yesterday, all but one of the public comments was about homeless housing and the issue of our homeless neighbors camping at the fairgrounds. So, you know, it's front burner right now, and I think it's something that we as a community can do responsively. And I think that that's just what we need to do. I mean, it's, it feels like, I think I said stat on the last forum. We need to do it stat. But I mean, I feel like we have the resources and the capacity to do this, so let's roll up our sleeves and get it done. I've heard from staff of local service providers that the last few months have provided a really important opportunity for them to work together, and they've learned a lot about working together effectively with the homeless community who's living out at the fairgrounds now. They've built a productive collaboration. I don't want to see us pull the rug out from under that collaboration that's just been built. It's a foundation that we can build on to come up with creative solutions going forward, whether that's tiny houses or safe park sites, as I've seen mentioned. People need access to water, bathrooms, heat. I mean, winter is coming, even though it's beautiful and sunny outside right now. It's the least we can do as a community in this incredibly and increasingly stressful time that we're all living in. We're all talking about how we've just started on this path of COVID response, and I feel like, I don't know how many people feel like they have a crystal ball. I don't feel like I have one, but I'm seeing signs in the work that I do with nonprofits in the community that we're in this for a long ride, and we need to, as a community, rise to the occasion to support our residents who don't have what they need, the basics. And I just want to say, I hear here to capital projects, what Kate said. I think that we need to double down on raising capital dollars to get some of this infrastructure built in our community. It's just something that needs to be done, and it's something I've done multiple times before, and I would look forward to doing as a county commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Heidi. And our incumbent commissioner, Kate, let's turn to you. We know that you've been in the thick of the discussion about the fairgrounds, so go ahead, please.
Sure. And just as a little update, yes, folks will be moving from the Erickson Building back to shelter downtown, and some housing advocates contacted Attorney General's Office about the campers as to whether or not the eviction moratorium applied to them, and the fairgrounds agreed to take back four of the campers, the four that were unhoused. And so they will be staying there indefinitely, will not have to leave after 14 days, so just as an update. Again, this is something we're talking about every week in session, and I keep saying again and again, we have to start a public process now of deciding where we are going to put a permanent encampment, tiny home village. You know, there's still a lot of questions, but we need to pull together the housing providers, the homeless, the neighbors, and businesses to decide how and where we're going to put people safely and with dignity and provide those wraparound services. I don't know if that's at the fairgrounds or somewhere else. I can't say that yet. And if that's the consensus of the people who know more about this issue, I will support it. We do know that having public water and wastewater and access to services is critical, which means that this location is probably going to be within city limits. And I know it's not going to be easy to get community buy-in on a perfect spot. We know that this is a tough issue that is subject to lots of nibism. But it's, I think we're long past due to come up with a solution that is actually going to work for more people and put them on a true path to stability.
Thank you, Commissioner. And let's turn to Lorna in response for that same, to that same question. Lorna, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Patrick. I agree with a lot of what I've already heard here today, but I really think we need at least a two-pronged approach right now, as Heidi said, winter is approaching. We, I would be very surprised, knowing what I know about government and how slow wheels sometimes have to roll, that we could actually deploy a tiny home village in time to give shelter to our homeless people by the time the weather changes. I'm fully in support of siting and maintaining a tiny home village, and I think it's a big part of our solution in the future. And these don't have to be, you know, a works of art, finely honed and crafted, you know, $100,000 tiny homes. They can, they can be just a roof, windows, a door, heating, lighting, running water, you know, sanitary made accessible. So I hope we're thinking more along that line. But in the
But in the meantime, I'm going to go back to an idea I raised earlier, and that is that I think we need to put together a database, get the social service organizations and the county agencies together to put together databases. Where are the available camping spots where, you know, people that actually have vehicles or maybe have a camper could stay for prolonged periods during the winter? You know, so a step up maybe from safe parking. And where do we have manufactured home villages where there's capacity, where there might even be some vacant manufactured homes that the county could lease or purchase? Housing that's immediately available with services where we could put people to keep them safe through the winter. And I know we have a number of these facilities around the county. I've seen them. I've talked to these folks. So I really think that that should be a next step, is getting a database like that put together. So that longer term solution is where we're going to cite some permanent tiny home villages, maybe plural. I tend to agree with Commissioner Kate. We need to look where those, you know, water and sewer facilities already exist. So, you know, that might be city limits. Plus, those folks need access to medical care and shopping, et cetera. So, but we need to get on this now. Again, I'll just say, I think we're going to see our homeless problem increase as evictions start happening. And I'm glad to hear that the eviction timeline was extended. But then, you know, eventually it will hit us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. And for our final answer, the same question, Amanda, if you'll respond, please.
Thank you, Patrick. So in response to the fairgrounds issue, the fairgrounds seems like the most logical place currently. The Housing Task Force has, we have requested from the county a full inventory of all county-owned property that might be usable for, for camping, for tiny homes. This is all something that's in the works, and we're looking at it. I'm really glad to hear about those, those four sites, Kate. Thank you so much. I think that that's a really critical thing. There, there are certain members of our unhomed, individuals who are unhome, who simply do not want to be in congregate shelter space or for whatever reason, they just don't want to be in that environment, which also brings another question, maybe not so much an answer. But we, we also need to look at what the funding streams are going to be to create those wraparound services. And so whether it's at the fairgrounds or another location, it's not just making sure that we have running water and flushing toilets. Yes, we need those things. Absolutely, we need those things. The fairgrounds makes the most sense in so many ways because there's already infrastructure in place. You know, one of my opponents has mentioned, why aren't we just looking at manufactured homes or utilizing some of the other trailer parks in the areas around Hadlock? And again, that comes back to the necessity of having a sewer system. Many of those, those trailers are in parks where there's septic systems that need updating, and they can't be updated. The units themselves, the trailers, can't be updated without the septic being updated, which creates this loop that people get stuck in. All the more reason we need to have a wastewater management plan that works. But I do think that, you know, the county owns the fairgrounds. The fair is not happening this year. If we build tiny homes, they can be moved to other locations. I think that we need to think about having tiny homes as an option that can be movable around our county, that they're not going to have a permanent residence necessarily at our fairgrounds, but maybe it's a place to start. And maybe we can do something, bringing together an organization like Habitat or a model similar to Peninsula Housing Authority or Habitat, whereby community members come together and help us build small dwelling units. And I'd actually advocate that they are well-made, because I, you know, I find that building something well once always works better than building it poorly five and six, seven and eight times, and it's costing us more money. So I think building some well-made structures that can be utilized by the county for many years to come would be the smarter approach. Yeah. And thank you so much for your time today.
Well, thank you, Amanda. And as we turn towards a brief closing statement, I think I speak on behalf of all of the folks that are tuned into our Zoom forum today about how deeply we impressed, we are impressed we are by the, by our discussion. And all of you obviously are familiar with the issues, and, and what a group of stellar candidates. Thank you for standing for public office. And let's give deference to our incumbent Commissioner Kate as we, as we take closing statements. And Commissioner, please.
Great. Well, thank you again, both for your engagement in the political process and also in the daily work of serving our community members with behavioral health issues. It's been so great. I ride by the Recovery Cafe every day, and I'm just so pleased to see actual bricks and mortar infrastructure coming together to support vulnerable people. And I think it's an example of how nonprofit service providers and volunteers and public funds can be leveraged to actually make a difference. So let's do more of this, please. I did want to mention the radio program that KPTZ is hosting, and it is this Thursday night. I'm not sure if Heidi said Wednesday, but it's Thursday night from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The sheriff will be joined by a number of panelists, Black Indigenous people of color, to talk about law enforcement and to try to give voice to what it's like to be brown in this community. And I think it's important that we start this conversation. We know that it's not only people of color who don't always feel protected by law enforcement. Also, a lot of the people that you serve feel that way as well. So it's, I think it's a really important conversation that we have. And so just wanted to reiterate that I, I love this work. It is hard work. This is a very difficult time. I applaud all of the candidates for District 2. This is not going to be an easy job. The next four years are going to be rough. I think we are going to see a lot of stressors affecting our community, both on the personal level. You know, we already see our crisis line receiving about twice as many calls as usual, increase in domestic violence calls going to the sheriff's office. You know, we're just the beginning of the iceberg of families feeling economic stress, and that's going to trickle down to government as well. We're going to have a hard time balancing our budget. Which, you know, when we're talking about a public health crisis, and remember, county manages both public health and emergency operations, it's going to be a tough time. So it's not going to be a fun four years. And I am just really heartened that I have a few great women who are standing up to partner with me. And I am sure, sure hoping that I get your votes and am reelected. I shouldn't assume that I will be, but please know that the issues we've talked about today are near and dear to my heart, and I will carry them with me into my second term. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for your last four years. In terms of closing statements, let's turn to Amanda, and then Heidi, and then finally, Lorna. And Amanda, go ahead, please.
I want to thank you all for being here today. This is a critical moment in our history, and I, I know that many, many people, not just in our community, but in communities across our nation and across the globe, are being deeply impacted by the outcome of the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think that our mental health and resiliency is going to be a key piece of that. I hope that I am given the opportunity to step into leadership as your District 2 County Commissioner. And as so, I will hold close to my heart that we have spaces where people can be seen, that we're heard, that we can help build and facilitate that resilience throughout this pandemic and our recovery from it, because we will recover. Things do come around. Everything has a season, and we will get through this time, and we will be stronger for it as long as we take the lessons and we learn and do it well. I hope that you give me the opportunity to serve you in this time. Remember to cast your ballot on August 4th before 8:00. Make sure you get it to the courthouse. And I look forward to hearing the results and the opportunity to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. And let's turn to Heidi.
Thank you, Patrick. Well, I hope that some of the answers to questions today reinforce what I'm about to tell you. But I feel like my last 40 years here have afforded me the opportunity to prove myself to be resourceful, dependable, hardworking, and most importantly to me, trustworthy. I have decades of experience working in our community, realizing solutions for projects and priorities that seemed impossible to us. Engaging the community and developing collaboration has been central to all of these successes. I feel like these traits will be particularly valuable on the horizon. Our economy is fragile. Our unemployment historically sat at 4% to 6%. Now we're, we're over 15%. COVID-19 has clearly illustrated the need for a web of community resources working collaboratively to create a safety net for our neighbors, and that's where you all come in. The future is going to look different than any of us expected just six months ago. I was listening to something yesterday, and they said it had been six months, and I was like, oh, my God. Six months of Zoom. But it's going to take all of us working together, really, everyone. It's going to, it's going to take every single one of you with me. And I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get the work done for the citizens of our county. And I hope that you'll vote for me if you live in District 2 on August 4th, and then in November. And I really want to thank you for your time today and all the work that you do in our community. I've been digging into your websites and talking to a bunch of you, and I feel like I've been increasingly inspired by the work that you guys do, Dove House, Recovery Cafe, NAMI, all of you. Thank you for what you do.
And thank you, Heidi. And Lorna, to you.
Thanks, Patrick. I also want to join my fellow candidates and our commissioners and thank all of you for the absolutely important, and I know sometimes heart-wrenching work you do, NAMI, Dove House, the rest of the social services organizations that, boy, giving that kind of donated time, that kind of volunteer effort, well, actually paid or volunteer, just takes a lot of dedication. So my, my hat's off to you, and thank you for what you do. As we've seen, we have real problems to solve in our community, and chief among those are health and housing issues as we deal with recovery from COVID-19. I believe in us, and I believe in the power of community. I believe in the future of our fantastic, unique county. As your commissioner, you can count on me to lead with vision, integrity, and grit, and to work collaboratively with you, with our wise elders, young families, youth leaders now stepping up to show us a new direction. If we all work together and listen to each other, we can forge a shining future for Jefferson County. We are in the middle of the August 4th primary voting by mail process. I encourage you, especially if you haven't voted yet, to review the Washington Fuse Progressive Voters Guide that endorses my candidacy. I'd be very honored if you would vote for Lorna Smith for Commissioner. Thank you.
And thank you, Lorna, and to all of our candidates. And a special thank you to Val, who organized all of this, along with assistance from Brian. This is no small thing to do. I'm absolutely convinced that getting people, getting people's schedules coordinated is one of the singular most difficult tasks that there is. And again, thanks to all of you, and thank you to our listening audience. I see that we have almost 40 people still tuned in, which is not a bad thing, given the fact that, as Val said, we all have Zoom fatigue. And Val, let's turn it, turn it back to you for just some final comments, and then we'll leave it there. Val?
So first of all, I'm going to echo what Patrick said. Thank you so much to all the candidates for being here today and taking the time to look into the questions that we had, because I know they were, some of them pretty detailed. And it, your answers and attention to the detail surrounding those answers kind of makes us think that we wish we had five positions on the county commission. We could put you all there because we know you've got such skills and experience and ideas. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you to the people who submitted questions and ideas. And thank you so much to everyone who has tuned in as a viewer and attending this whole forum. Without your interest in these issues, those organizations like NAMI and Recovery Cafe and Dove House, those things could not move forward without the support of all of you. So thank you so much. We want to wish all the candidates well. And before we end this meeting, I just want to ask Brian to stick with me while I deal with the video here. So a good day to all of you, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks so much, everyone.
So Brian and Patrick, is Patrick still there? No, I think he's gone.
He dipped out on the tech part.
So that I'm, I'm very pleased, Robert. It was so good to see you.
I think you can probably stop the recording now, Val.
Good to see you, too.